Testing 1, 2, 3. Testing. Testing 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, 9. Okay.
Thank you.
A quorum being present, this meeting will come to order. To the extent we can. What a wonderful turnout! And, uh, we have some really good news, I think, as well. Uh, and it relates to these things that are around your neck. So, um, handling this kind of a crowd is difficult, under any circumstance, but certainly under our old system, it would be very difficult, if not impossible. And, uh, but, we have a new voting device. And this can be used from anywhere in the room, from anywhere in the vestibule, from the peanut gallery. You guys in the peanut gallery can vote from right up there! So, we're gonna be in good shape, and if we have to put people on the stage in order to make room... So, in the old days, when we did standing and sitting votes, standing was important. This is gonna be a fairly short meeting, I think. So, we're going to, we're gonna have to just deal with the situation. We have SRO, Standing Room Only. So, we're gonna have people come in, register, come in, come to the front of the room, and find a place where you can be comfortable. There's still a bunch of seats available up here. But, uh, even if we run out of seats, because we have these voting devices, which the gentleman will explain how to use in a very short time, we're, we're pretty well covered on being able to get an accurate, secret ballot going forward on these items. So, we have more than a quorum, and we will now start the meeting. And we'll start it with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, and that will be led by Mr. Lombard.
Please remove your hats. Thank you. Altogether? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to have some opening remarks by our town administrator, Anthony Barletta. Mr. Barletta, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, welcome to the Town Hall, welcome to the special town meeting. I just had one quick, um, announcement. If Rob Thibault, Dave Liscio, and Roz Puleo are here, I'd ask you to please stand. Uh, these three, uh, residents of this town, have retired this year, and, uh, we've had a couple of, um, moments at Board of Select meetings, uh, recognizing them, but amongst the three of them is over sixty years of employment with the town, and all three of them are still involved. So, just a round of applause.
Great, wonderful people, wonderful service to the town. So, we have a few non-voters on the floor. We have Tony Barletta, Bob Dwyer, Jeff Blake, uh, Zach Taylor, Greg Alexander, David Lurie, Richard Snyder, and Eden Milroy. Are there any other, and we have a young man over here who I'm watching very closely, so, uh, he doesn't have a voting device. Are there any other non-registered voters on the floor? If so, please identify yourselves. Stand up, please. Yes, and your name?
Karen Driscoll.
Karen Driscoll. You, you don't have a voting device, do you? Alright, let me put that down. Yes, and in the balcony, we had one, yes? Your name, please. Jackie McNich? And you don't have a voting device either. Alright. We're gonna dust the voting devices to make sure that your fingerprints are not on any of them. Any other non-voters? Yes, sir?
Couldn't hear you.
Ron Cipano?
Rocco.
Rocco, okay. Any others? Lee? David Driscoll, alright.
No, they're not in the house?
She's on her way, she's having a big thing.
Okay, so, we have these devices around our necks. You're just gonna have to come in and process in, and we're gonna be bringing, we, we'll, you know, we've got a, we started at twelve-thirty, we have a, they have to come in, just come in and come to the front of the room and find a seat if they can, and if they can't...
No seats here, the bus stop's filled.
Yep, and but there, and there also, we've got a lot of, uh, of, see, we have more handicap seating than we need.
Yeah, it's six seats in, there's a hundred fifty people outside, you're gonna have to stop putting the money in.
Okay, please, come in, when you register, come to the stage, we'll put you up here. But, we're gonna have to proceed, because we, we, we're supposed to start at twelve-thirty, and we had a, we had a, a quorum at that time. So, anyway, these devices, I happen to use one at the American Heart Association Convention last Sunday in Philadelphia, and they're this, they're just delightful, and you can just see the results immediately of what, what's happening. And it's, uh, you're the only one that knows how you vote. So, it, it solves a number of problems, including the fact that we don't have to have standing, sitting votes, and that sort of thing. So, I would like to, uh, introduce Greg Alexander. Greg is with the company who has supplied these devices, and he will, uh, give you an explanation about how they're used and how they work.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, I am Greg Alexander from Turning Technologies. Uh, every registered voter does have, or every eligible voter has a, uh, response card keypad or clicker, as they're lovingly referred to often. Uh, when a, uh, when a motion i- is, uh, up for vote, you'll simply press the 1A button to cast a yes vote, a 2B button to cast a no vote, and, uh, if, you can, you can press the button as many times as you want, there's only going to be one vote registered from your device, and it will be the last vote that you press before the, the voting closes. So, you can change your mind. If you, if you initially vote yes, and you decide, "No, I wanna change that," just hit the 2 button, and that will change your vote. So, again, it will be the last one that you submit before the polling closes. Now, there is an electronic record of the, this vote being tallied, okay? Um, on the back of your device, you'll notice there's a barcode, and beneath that is a six-character alphanumeric device ID. That device ID is the only information that the computer is picking up, other than the vote that is being cast. And so, we'll have a record of that. We don't know which device you have, so we won't know how you, as an individual, voted, but i- if you're concerned, you do have the ability to just document the device ID you have, and the town clerk will have a record in her office of how that device voted across the board on every, uh, motion on which it was voted, okay? Uh, so, so that is available as far as a check and balance system. Uh, these devices, folks, they're not going to change the channel on your TV, they won't help you balance your checkbook or anything, so as you leave the meeting space, please do return them to the, uh, the volunteers that are each at the doors. Uh, just so that you know, uh, it, it's going to be a little difficult to see on this screen, but a successful yes vote, on your device, you will see, in the el, in the upper-left corner on the LCD screen there, you'll see 1 slash A, and you will see the green light indicator on the upper-right corner, okay? For a successful no vote, the LCD screen will show 2 slash B, and you'll get the green light. If you've cast a vote that is not a valid vote, it's not a yes or a no, you'll get a circle with the line through the middle of it, and, and a red light, okay? So, that's how you'll know whether your vote has been registered or not. My computer is not connected to the internet at all, this is all done offline, there's no Russian problem here that we have to worry about, anything like that, okay? Um, and I do work, there, there are many towns throughout the Commonwealth now are moving toward electronic voting. Uh, for today's session, I, I, our company is providing this technology free of charge to the town, so that you have the opportunity to experience it and decide for yourselves whether you'd like to use it in the future. I don't, I don't know, Mr. Moderator, if I'm allowed to recognize anyone for questions or not. I said, "I don't know if I'm allowed to recognize anyone for questions." Okay, yes?
So, do we take it out of the plastic?
Oh, no, you don't have to at all, just, it, right through the plastic, you'll see, and we have a couple of practice questions here for you, so you can kinda get a feel for, "How's this going to work?" Before we actually get to, particularly before we get to motions, uh, for three and four, I know those are hot topics for you folks. So, uh, here's the, here's the first question. Polling is open, will the Patriots win the Super Bowl? You'll press the 1A button for yes, the 2B button for no. In the upper-right corner, it, again, it's a little difficult to see with this projection setup, but there is a green box up there in the upper-right corner that indicates polling is open, and there's a counter right next to that showing how many votes have been accepted or received so far.
Two-hundred-and-ten votes have been cast so far.
Two-fifty some right now. So, uh, uh, you'll have time, and, and then, when the moderator feels it's time to begin wrapping this up, we need to keep this meeting moving, then he will, he will, uh, indicate that, and we'll activate a ten-second countdown timer, that's going to happen now. So, you can see the timer, you've got ten seconds, once that timer gets to zero, the polling will be closing.
Alright, two, one, zero.
And you can immediately see the results.
This means to me that there are some Buffalo Bills fans out there after all.
Now, I, I have one more question here, okay? The, uh, the question was, is there anything to stop people from vote, voting more than once? Again, you can press the button as many times as you want, only one vote is being recognized by the software from your device, so you're, you're not skewing the vote in any way. The other security measure that's in place, because these, these are used, I, I sell to all, all, uh, local communities, state governments, federal governments, uh, DoD, uh, our largest market is colleges and universities. There are students that go into a bookstore, they can buy a clicker and they use it in their classes. None of those devices would be recognized. The only devices that will be recognized to be able to cast votes today are the devices that are being passed out, and we re, we regulate that through that device ID that's on the back of the clicker, okay? So, here's the second question. Defacing a milk carton in the Commonwealth is punishable by a twenty-dollar fine. Do you think that is a true or a false statement? One for yes, two for no. Okay, we're over two-hundred-and-fifty votes now, so I'm gonna go ahead and advance the timer. You've got ten seconds, go ahead and wrap up and, and lock in your vote. So, we've got sixty-four percent say no, and thirty-six percent say yes. The actual answer, folks, it is no, because it's a ten-dollar fine. Uh, please, you know, I, I will be attending the meeting, I'll be available after the meeting, I'm happy to answer questions, uh, if, if anyone has any. Yes, ma'am.
So, uh, one of the, uh, one of the un, uh, unobvious benefits of this system is, I'm told, I don't believe it myself, but I've been told, that this system is even faster than me! Can you imagine anybody being faster at taking a vote than me? I can't believe it! We've gone through the last town meetings with, uh, thousands of articles, seems like, and all in a couple of hours. But, the beauty of it is, this will be much faster, and the regular town meeting will be much faster, so, people won't have to sit around all in a beautiful April or May day, and, uh, be wasting time waiting for us to count votes. So, the system is, uh, gonna be a boon for us, all I expect. I'm sorry, you have a question? B. B.
That is correct, yes. The device is in sleep mode, right now, if you look at it, it's blank, it's in sleep mode. When you press a button, it comes on, and it will stay on just for a couple of seconds, and then it will go back to sleep, it's a battery-saving function. Yes? We can show both. Initially, I think I have it set so that it'll show the number, but then, like, for a two-thirds vote, we can toggle over without having to leave that slide, and you can see the percent as well.
It happens, though. I studied mathematics in college, and two-thirds vote is 66 and six-sevenths, six-nines, I forget, but it's up there someplace, we'll figure it out. All right.
Thank you.
I think we're actually in a position to do some business. So, let, let's have Article 1, Mr. Manady.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon, Mr. Manady.
Thank you. So, Article 1, the motion. I move that the town vote to appropriate from the retained earnings account of the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund the sum of $62,351 for the direct expenses associated with the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund in the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019.
Segmented by Mr. Fogum.
So, this, this article was obviously previously approved at, at the annual town meeting in April, and I just want you to know that it doesn't increase our water and sewer rate beyond the increase that was adopted earlier this year. So, what we're trying to do is, with the $62,000 approximately, is, I don't know if you know, but Gerillic Farms in Lynn actually closed. So, the relationship that we have with the Lynn Water and Sewer Commission is such that it's based on the, the percentage proportional of what, you know, we contribute versus towns like Swamp Scott or Saugus contribute. So, with the closing of the Gerillic Farms plant, that adjustment or that proportion changed slightly, so, what we didn't know is, you know, it's an extra $62,000 that we're gonna have to appropriate directly for this. I know Swamp Scott earlier this week had something similar adopted their town meeting, they're probably 3X of that in, in their appropriation, I think they had to appropriate maybe 197,000 towards this. So, it's something that we certainly didn't expect, and it's, it's something that, you know, we're looking to move forward.
Further discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing, those in favor signify, oh, no, we just pushed the button, push the button, hey! I was falling back like a horse going to the barn. So, if you're in favor of the motion, signify by pressing 1A on your little device. Three-hundred-and-50 votes cast, I think we can time it down. Hey, vote within the next seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. Whoa, 364 to 10, that passes. Thank you. Article 2. Mr. Fogum.
Article 2. I move that the town vote to indefinitely postpone action on this article.
Segmented by Ms. Tarmy.
So, so that's actually different than the recommendation that shows up in our book, and Tony's gonna explain to you why that's a good thing.
Thank you, John. So, I'll be brief, this is a supporting statement in the book for me on this, but the ocean rescue boat and the ocean rescue truck have both reached a critical state of replacement. So, the original plan here was to supplement this funding with previously appropriated capital funds and a fundraising effort led by the fire department. However, through that effort of the fire department, when they approached the Anjulo family and asked them about donating to their fund, and they learned that it was about an ocean rescue boat for the fire department, they actually had a boat, about $25,000 market value of that boat, that they were willing to donate to the town, and it meets the exact needs, short of a few adjustments that we need to do, so... So, we thank them, and we thank everyone else that donated to the fire department, and this article is no longer needed.
So, unfortunately, you don't get to use your little voting devices on that one. However, we do have an Article 3. Michael?
Don't you have to?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Ah, ah, that's right, the town council reminded me. There was a motion made to indefinitely postpone. Those in favor of indefinite postponement, push 1A on your device. Those opposed, push 2B, or not 2B. Thanks, Dan. Three-hundred-and-fifty-seven, put the timer in, yeah? Good, four, three, two, one. Three-hundred-and-fifty-one to twenty-four, okay. It's the motion to indefinite postpone has passed. All right, Michael?
I move that the Nahat zoning bylaws, that is, the Town of Nahat bylaws, Article 15 zoning bylaws, be amended as follows. In Section 410, uses permitted in a natural resource district, subpart E entitled prohibited uses, at the end of Item 2, between the word above and the final period, insert the parenthetical clause, see other parts of Section 410, Subparts A through D, and see also Section 202, definitions for nonprofit, religious, or educational purposes.
Is there a second? Who was, who's second? Enzo?
Who's second in that, please?
Great, Harry, thank you. Okay, further discussion?
My name is Michael Manning. I live at 10, 12 Valley Way, 12 Fennel Way in Nahat. Dear friends, I respectfully request your aid to pass with a yes vote this Article 3 in today's special town meeting. This, this article, written by me, was signed as a petition by 107 voters, including some of you. The objective of this article is to ensure that our zoning bylaws retain the well-crafted language of Section 202, definitions for nonprofit, religious, or educational purposes, which ensure that our zoning bylaws are consistent with state law. This article amends the indicated section, which currently reads, that within that natural resource district, any building or structure, private or public, except as permitted above, is prohibited. And it will read after insertion, that any building or structure, public or private, except as permitted above, see other parts of Section 410, Subparts A through D, and see also Section 202, definitions for nonprofit, religious, or educational purposes. While I'm sure you can't visualize that sentence, it's printed in the report that was sent to you by the Finance and Advisory Book in the appendix material under Article 3. Our current zoning bylaws contain in Section 202 specific language, and clearly states, quote, "Land or structures for educational purposes on land owned by a nonprofit educational corporation shall be permitted in any district," unquote. This existing Nahat zoning language makes it clear that a nonprofit educational university has property rights to develop land that it owns for educational purposes. These same rights are mandated, mandated in Massachusetts law that prohibit cities and towns from passing zoning laws to restrict these property rights, and specifically in Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 3, also known as the Dover Amendment. The Supreme Court has also long upheld the property rights of nonprofit educational corporations as constitutionally protected. You can read the interesting story of Dartmouth College versus Woodward, a United States Supreme Court decision of 1819, a couple hundred years ago. In Adam Winkler's book, We the Corporations, available in the Nahat Library. When the Commonwealth of New Hampshire decided that Dartmouth College, a New Hampshire educational corporation, was not meeting the Commonwealth's educational needs, the state legislature passed an act to replace Dartmouth's president. Dartmouth College trustees hired Daniel Webster to defend their case in the State and Supreme Court. United States Supreme Court Justice John Marshall and the Supreme Court voted in favor of Dartmouth College and affirmed that the property rights of educational corporations to pursue their educational objectives on land they owned was protected by the contracts clause of the United States Constitution. The ownership of the land does not seem to be in doubt. The United States government bought the land during World War II to support coastal defenses with gunnery and later Nike missile defenses. The US government offered the land, first to the Town of Nahat, for $30,000 in 1964, when it no longer needed these defense facilities. The transcript of the town meeting is available in the town clerk's office, and copies have been made available to both the library and the historical society. At that meeting, the transcript shows the citizens discussed the desirability of keeping the land for its ocean views and other values. They also discussed the cost of acquiring the land and maintaining it as a park over the next 20 years into the future. The town meeting also discussed that if the town did not act to buy the land, the land would be offered to other public and charitable groups, and ultimately, could be sold to a real estate developer for use as 18 single-family residences on 35,000 square-foot lots, as allowed in the R1 zoning district. The 1964 Nahat Annual Town Meeting voted indefinite postponement on Article 16 to buy the land. Nahat did not buy the land. Northeastern University purchased the land shortly thereafter for a marine science center. The records of the land transactions are recorded in the local Massachusetts Registry of Deeds in Salem. Northeastern did buy the land. Others, including the proponents of Article 4, dispute these ideas on property rights, and two lawsuits are currently underway between the Nahat Preservation Trust, with more than 20 individual Nahat citizens included as named parties, and Northeastern University. I, for one, believe that the town should patiently await the final judgments of the appropriate judge or jury for the land court or the superior court for their findings in these suits. The existing Nahat zoning bylaw is clear, and states in Section 202 for the definition of nonprofit, religious, or educational purposes. Land or structures for educational purposes on land owned by a nonprofit educational corporation shall be permitted in any district, provided, however, that such land or structures may be subject to reasonable regulation concerning the bulk height of the structures and determining yard sizes, lot area, setbacks, open space, parking, and building coverage requirements, as described in Table 2 of Section 4 for each district. This language is almost a verbatim copy of the language of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A, entitled, "Subjects Which Zoning May Not Regulate," aka the Dover Amendment. Therefore, please vote yes on 3, keep our existing zoning bylaws as they are, consistent with state and federal law. Thank you for your attention.
Do we have a representative of the planning board here? Was there a meeting that was, was this, was there a hearing on this motion?
Wow, a lot of people. Yes, there was a hearing, there were several hearings. I'm gonna give you, my, by the way, my name is Cal Hastings, and I'm the chairman of the Nahat Planning Board, very recently, I might add, but I am. This process between, relative to this zoning issue, started in, in, 2019, but in March, and it, it developed into a point where two petitions were actually filed, one by Mr. Manning, and another by Mr. Musman. These, the public hearings were, were advertised and held for each of these, in accordance with Mass. General Law, and there were a great number of private citizens that, that came to these public hearings, in fact, standing room only. These petitions also involved a number of, of signature petitions that people got, and combined, there were some 300, 350, 370, something like that, Nahat citizens that, that signed these various petitions, not equally, some more for some, less for some with the other. These hearings, these public hearings were held, and the planning board listened very carefully and considered all of the elements, and, and the timing on when this, these actions should take place, whether this town meeting should exist, or whether it should be a regular town meeting, which would be sometime in the spring, an annual town meeting, was an issue, and the, it was an issue with the petitioners, and it was also an issue with the selectmen. But at, in the final analysis, both Mr. Musman and Mr. Manning filed additional petitions which, which included, that brought the... which, which included, brought the number of signatures which mandated that a special town meeting would be called. So at that point, and this covered a period of time that ran up through the middle of October, at that point, the planning board considered the pros, the cons, all of the elements which we thought would be relevant. Keep, keep in mind that, you know, we're really like you, only here and there, and we had to make this decision, and the bottom line is that with the number of participants, the number of residential participants, we felt that the citizenry was qualified to make the decision as we were. So the planning board did not really make any recommendation to, to the Board of Selectmen. We did submit a statement telling them that we would like them to call a special town meetings since the petitioners on each of those petitions had met the requirement, the legal requirement, and we asked them, we asked them to call this meeting. So that's really kind of a consolidated consensus of what we did and how we did it. If you have any questions with regards to any of that, I'd be happy to try to answer it. Yes, sir. If you do, go up there, and I can see you.
Given that it seems to me that Article 3 and Article 4, oh, Jeff Thomas, 16 Little Nahant Road, given that it seems to me that Article 3 and Article 4 may be somewhat oppositional or canceling out of each other, I'm curious as to whether a yes or no vote on either one affects the other. In other words, they're saying different things. As far as I can see, we can't have both. Maybe I'm wrong.
Well, if you, if you, Article 3 provides some of the, some of the issues which are trying to be solved, and Article 4, maybe at some point, assuming certain things happen, not by their own provision, but by action that's taken by either of the parties involved, it could, it could make it perhaps more effective, but subject to those being, coming out in the right way.
So Article 3 could make Article 4 more effective?
No, I think, no, no, I didn't mean to say that, if that's what you, I don't, what, there are some things in Article 4 that have to, that in order to make it as effective as it could be, have to be done, and it's, it's really, I think, although I'm, I'm not a lawyer, and, and my, my interpretation of it is that probably some form of legal action would be required by one or the other party to affect it, a significant difference.
So if I interpret what you're saying correctly, we could vote yes on both, and that wouldn't be the end of the matter?
I, I wouldn't necessarily, I wouldn't say that, but if that's what your conclusion is, I, I.
One council has some, we'll try to answer the question as phrased.
Thank you, sir.
Jeff Blake.
Good afternoon, everyone. I see we got another giant crowd. I think I've only come to three of your meetings, and you pack this house every time. It's, it's great to see. My name is Jeff Blake, as Mr. Moderator just said, and through you, Mr. Moderator. Your question is, does one cancel out the other? And in my opinion, anytime a court reads a statute and a bylaw is a statute, they're read to be in harmony with one another. One section can't essentially make another section irrelevant, and here, in my opinion, you can read these in harmony with one another. Section 4 changes the definition, I'll strike that, Article 4 changes the definition in, in your bylaw, the definition is pointed out in Article 3, so there may be a slight difference with respect to what the proponent of Article 3 wanted, but I think that they can live in harmony with one another.
Yes?
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. Mike Rawworth, 31 Summer Street. I urge a no vote on this article, a vehement vigorous no vote, and matter of fact, click your clicker 18 times on the 2B. There's a number of reasons I say it. The first has to do with the point that was just raised. If for, by some reason, there's an affirmation, that both articles pass, I think that guarantees litigation, because for one thing, this article is so convoluted that no ordinary human being can read it, and I say that as a lawyer. The other thing is that this article has the effect of increasing the bargaining power of Northeastern University. The same Northeastern University, many of you know this already, that yesterday submitted a paper to the town calling on giving it the authority to subdivide East Point, perhaps into the 18 McMansions, single housing family units, that Mr. Manning, thank you, Mr. Manning, just referred to. That is a bad thing for the town. Northeastern does not need any more bargaining power, and if there's to be any bargaining, the bargaining power should, should be concentrated in the hands of the town, this body for future votes, actions of the selectmen, to make sure that Northeastern does not steamroller over us. And to, to point out the, the effect, the objective of this proposal, let me direct your attention to the page in the, in the booklet that has a date stamp on it of August 5, 2019. And in particular, look at the bottom, just above the closing short paragraph, and in the bottom of the long paragraph, three lines from the bottom, the line that begins with the word "authorities." Now, the sentence that, that includes that begins with, "We trust our town administrator and elected boards of selectmen and planning board, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera," and then jumps down to this text, "to act in our best interests and assure that we are compensated now and in the future for impacts to our infrastructure, et cetera." Compensated. Well, the signs that I see around town say that Nahant is not for sale, and Nahant is not for subdivision.
Further discussion on the motion?
Amen to that. Hi, my name is Laura Poulain. I live at 182 Wilson Road, and I would like to take a couple of minutes to share my perspective on why it is important to vote no on 3 and yes on 4. In 1991, residents voted to adopt Nahant's current zoning bylaw and to designate open space areas that were worthy of conservation. These include Bailey's Hill, the Lowlands, East Point, et cetera. But if one looks at the law today, two sections, specifically 4.10 and 4.13 of this bylaw, are out of alignment. We need to bring the two into alignment to best protect our natural resource districts and open spaces, and that's why we're here today. Specifically, Section 4.0 of the bylaw provides that, except for limited recreational use, buildings and structures are not permitted in natural resource districts, and those are the beautiful open spaces that we enjoy today. The table in Section 4.13 seems to indicate that building in a natural resource district is permitted for educational and religious institutions. The potential issue arises because Section 4.13 does not make clear that these building rights that are granted for nonprofits are already granted under the state law known as the Dover Amendment, and the Dover Amendment supersedes any local bylaw. In other words, the rights given to religious or educational nonprofits to override local zoning are limited to those mandated under the Dover Amendment, and the town does not need to grant any rights and privileges to nonprofits beyond what is mandated by Dover. Article 4, which we are voting on today, clears up this potential ambiguity by aligning Section 4.13 with 4.10, thereby strengthening the town bylaw. In sum, the proposed change in Article 4 treats everyone equally with regard to natural resource area development. Please vote yes on Article 4. In contrast, Article 3 does the opposite, and would grant nonprofits rights to build in the natural resource district greater than the state would allow anyone else to build. It would weaken the town of Nahant's ability to protect its limited natural resources and open spaces. Please vote no on Article 3. So I ask you, if you care about the town's ability to protect natural resource areas and open spaces, again, please vote no on 3 and yes on 4.
Further discussion on the motion? Yes, sir.
My name is Brendan Baranac Olmstead, 2 Summer Street, Nahant, Mass. I sort of, coming at this from a, a different perspective, this morning I sat in on the planning board meeting, and I know there's, you know, there's been discussion about the plans that were recently submitted by Northeastern, and one of the things that did come up, the planning board hasn't had time to review these documents, but the time, but the, the fact that these documents were submitted to the town has kind of locked in what the bylaw rules that could potentially affect these documents are, in that if a measure is not approved today, then there's, I guess, a three-year moratorium on any changes to the bylaws that can take place. So the plans that were submitted would be governed by the rules that existed on Friday, so that whatever decision we make today, we have to decide, you know, either trying to vote on Article 3 or Article 4, but if no change, if neither one passes, then whatever the rules are, were on Friday, are locked in for the next three years. So that is a component which I had not anticipated. I would suggest, though, I personally, you know, would be more supportive of Article 3, because I'm concerned Article 4 is, opens the town up to legal litigation, and we already have been spending money on our sewer systems, we already know we have to completely overhaul our sewer systems, we have only so many other expenditures that we need just to survive, just so that, you know, we can flush our toilets, just so we can get off the island and get to work, that this, it becomes a can of worms, and that they've got the resources to outspend us. And my concern is that Article 4 will put us in that position, that we're going to be spending the money on litigation instead of fixing our roads, dealing with the storm surges, and that will then ultimately just deteriorate the town. If more homes get flooded, Northeastern's facility may be fine, but if your home's flooded, Northeastern's not going to replace it. We can't replace Nahant. It's going, if it ends up getting washed away, it's gone. And so that I would, you know, I urge you to consider at least voting for Article 3, you know, if you choose, you can, Article 4, but one of these has to pass, if not, whatever the rule, what the rules are, you know, as of Friday, is what there is for the next three years. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion? Yes?
Alice Court, 7 Valley Road. With respect to what the fellow who just spoke, I guess at some point would probably need to have legal tell us whether that is actually true, and, but basically, both Articles 3 and 4 are written in what I perceive to be legalese, and for those of us who are not lawyers, the language is very confusing, but both are attempts to clarify ambiguities in the current natural resource zoning bylaws of the 1990s. So if we keep whatever was in place as of yesterday, what we've got is an ambiguous bylaw. But foregoing the style, though, I think the most significant difference between these two articles is whether or not there is a change in the table of use regulations shown in one of the warrant appendices. It's been described in the table under the column NR for Natural Resources and the row for Nonprofit Religious or Educational Purposes, there is currently a P to permit structures. In Mr. Manning's Article 3, he makes no changes to the table, thereby he intentionally keeps the P in the table to permit educational and religious institutions to build in natural resource areas such as East Point. That's with his current language. In contrast, Article 4 changes the P to N and does not permit building in a natural resource area except as required by the state law currently known as the Dover Amendment. Why is this important? If the state law is changed in the future to protect, to further protect natural resource areas, and such an amendment is currently being considered in the state legislature, I believe that Article 3 would still permit building in natural resource areas such as East Point, whereas Article 4 would then protect areas such as East Point in accordance with the newly amended state law. Nahant residents would therefore not need to consider another bylaw change to gain the full protection accorded by the amended state law. In Mr. Manning's explanation for Article 3, he states, quote, "We love Nahant," end quote, multiple times. I am not questioning his love for Nahant, and I do not question the love for Nahant of people on both sides of this issue. However, after learning that he also worked for Northeastern University for many years, I wonder if that might also have contributed to his proposing Article 3, which seems to be extremely accommodating to Northeastern's plans for development of the natural resource area of East Point. Therefore, I have to respectfully disagree with him about what is best to keep Nahant the special place that is our hope. And based on previous petitions, it's clear that many other Nahant residents feel the same desire to protect the natural resource district of East Point from massive development. Lastly, Mr. Manning sent a letter to some, but not all, residents of Nahant about Article 3, and within this letter, there were several statements that I think were incomplete to the point of being misleading. Yes, as he states, in 1964, the town voted for a postponement regarding buying the land, and Northeastern made a deal with the military for land at East Point for a marine science center. That's where he ends it. But they made a, a deal for the land at East Point for a marine science center, but also for a wildlife preserve for university folk to study and others to enjoy, and that is the area that Nahant's 1991 bylaw identified as a natural resource district. Mr. Manning also implied at the end of his letter that Article 4 is an attempt to pass a zoning bylaw, a zoning law that is prohibited by Massachusetts law, but that implication is completely inaccurate, as Article 4 very specifically defers to the state law known as the Dover Amendment. So to protect all of Nat, Nahant's natural resource areas, including East Point, to the greatest extent allowed by current and possible future state law, please vote no on Article 3 and vote yes on Article 4. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion?
Judith Walsh, 33 High Street. Regarding Article 3, I move the question.
The question has been called for. The issue is whether to cut off debate on Article 3. A two-thirds majority is required, and so the question is whether or not to cut off further debate and vote, and make a vote on, on Article 3. Point of order. Point of order. Call the question, it's two-thirds majority, wrote. Call the question, it's two-thirds. If it wasn't questioned by Paula, I wouldn't check it, but I'm going to check it. All right. Even a patent attorney got it right. It's two-thirds, two-thirds.
So a yes vote means the debate is shut off?
That's correct. So a yes vote means that further debate is shut off, and then we have to proceed to vote on Article three. So, you guys got your gizmos. Go for it. One A is yes, and two B is no. So please cast your votes. Let's, I think we can wrap it up. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one, zip. So the question is called for, and now we vote on Article three, the motion that Mr. Manning made a while back. Yeah, on the what? Yes. So those in favor of Article, of the motion on Article three, vote yes, one A. Those opposed, vote no, two B. And I promise I won't do the, or not to be joke anymore. Okay, let's wind it up. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one, zero. Article four. We don't have, is someone going to make a motion for Article four? Ah, I reckon, I know you. Mr. Musman.
My name is Jeff Musman, 15 Tri Mountain Road. I'm, let's see, where am I here? I move to see if the town will vote to amend the Nahant zoning bylaws to clarify the definition of nonprofit religious or educational purposes.
Jeff, let me, can we just rephrase that? Let's not see if the town will vote, just say I moved the town to vote to do that.
Okay.
All right? It would be just from, we want everything perfect here.
Need to fix your script.
We want, well, I didn't, it's not my script.
Yes, okay, thank you. Thank you, Dave. I move to amend the Nahant zoning bylaws to clarify the definition of nonprofit religious or educational purposes by making the following changes. Item one, amend the definition of nonprofit religious or educational purposes by, one, inserting, quote, "Only to the extent required by Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 3," end of quote, following, quote, "By a nonprofit educational corp," by a nonprofit educational corporation shall be permitted in any district," end of quote. Two, changing Section four to Section five. And three, deleting park, quote, parking, end of quote, and inserting, quote, "And parking as described in Table 6-1," end of quote, following, end of quote, beginning of quote, "for each district," end of quote, period. The definition would thereby read in full.
Wait a second, wait a second. So you've made your motion, let's see if there's a second.
Second.
Is this not part of it? Is this not part of it?
Yeah. I think the motion is to make those amendments, and then after you've made those amendments, hopefully it'll read the way you've got it. But the motion is to make the amendments, yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to divide your question. He's got a whole thing to do. He also wants to maintain the bylaw.
Okay, but I, don't you have to read, if you make the amendments for the first one, then make the amendments for the second one. You don't have to read it until you get into discussion. But just tell them what amendment you want to make.
So item two, I move to amend, well, it's part of the same motion, right? Item two, will amend Table one, Table of Use Regulations by inserting inside the parenthesis, end of, beginning of quote, and note three below, end of quote, following, beginning of quote, "See definition perens," for perens, "nonprofit religious or educational purposes," end of perens, and changing the designation letter from P to N in that now, in that row under the column labeled NR. Item three, amend Table one, Table of Use Regulations by inserting the following after Note two. Three, uses or structures for nonprofit religious or educational purposes are allowed in a natural resource district to the extent provided in Section 4.10 of this bylaw or to the extent required by Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 3.
All right, I was premature on the seconding. Mr. Raworth will second the motion.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
I struggled with how to get through this and talk today. I, too, am a lawyer. I read Michael's proposed amendment. We probably would disagree with that from a legal perspective, and I could get into a whole discussion about that.
Don't.
At a legal level, but I'm not, I'm not, Dave. I'm not, trust me.
Thank you.
That one is come and gone, Jeff.
So, I think, though, that it's a much simpler issue here. It's a much baser issue, which is that Article four clears up the potential ambiguity that has been talked about, preserves our open spaces by making crystal clear that the rights of a nonprofit educational or religious institution to override our local zoning are limited, are limited to those required by state law under the Dover Amendment. I urge you to vote yes on Article four.
Mr. Hastings, I know you discussed the general, is there, so you also met on this article, and this is the, one of the articles that you reported your meetings on, and those meetings took place in accordance with the requirements of state law, and you don't have a recommendation from the meeting on it. All right, further discussion on the motion? Bee?
Bee Rogers, 44 Pearl Road. I'm standing here to urge the town to vote no on Article four. I am not taking a stand on Northeastern's development or whether, anything that has to do with, do we want to prevent them or allow them or anything like that? That's not the point of my comment. The point of my comment is that up until now, we have had lawsuits against Northeastern by private groups and groups of private citizens who have incurred the cost of those legal proceedings, whatever they are, on their own, on their own. If this article passes and the modification becomes law, now this is part of the town's legal structure. And it means that if litigation takes place, which it will for sure, then it will be the town on the hook for the effort and cost and time involved in litigating with Northeastern. My second point is because this proposed amendment has to say, except as required by Mass. General Laws, blah, blah, it doesn't make a difference. The fact is, Northeastern is an educational institution, and it's covered by the Dover Amendment. So we're passing a law saying, no, you can't do it except if you're covered by the Dover Amendment, you are covered by the Dover Amendment. So we have here a proposal that will be ineffective because, as was pointed out earlier, the Mass. General Laws rule, and we are opening up now the town, rather than groups of private citizens, to be exposed to and have to litigate. And so I think it's a bad idea to make this part of the town's legal structure, and I urge you, whether you want or don't want Northeastern there, I urge you to vote no on Article four because of the exposure to the town.
Further discussion on the motion? Mr. Raworth.
Mike Raworth, 31 Summer Street. Probably the most pivotal point having to do with Article four, apart from the general purpose of empowering the town to deal with strength vis-à-vis Northeastern, is the submission yesterday of this subdivision plan. And that means that if we fail to enact Article four, if it fails to pass, the motion that Jeff just made, then that will open the door toward the viability of that submission for subdivision of East Point. I don't, I've not had a chance to talk to everybody, but I can't imagine that there's anybody in town who would love to see a bunch of McMansions where East Point currently stands. And the, in other words, to fail to enact it will enable that proposal vis-à-vis subdivisions to go forward, because they just filed it yesterday in anticipation that we would defeat Article four. Going back to what Bee just said, the effect of Article four is more than aligning the bylaw with the Dover Amendment, because Jeff just pointed out, it changes one of the uses that's permitted in East Point, a natural resources area, so that there is not a permission, or at least an arguable permission, and it aligns our bylaw so that there's no arguable inconsistency. The whole bylaw will be uniform and consistent, and that, I submit, has the greatest effect in making less likely litigation, because with the way the things currently stand, there is at least an ambiguity in the bylaw, which Northeastern could exploit if they decided to bring litigation. But once we act on this article and enact it, that ambiguity will be gone, and it will take away that argument. Now, to the prospect of litigation in general, look, anytime towns change zoning, there's a lot of other things that they do, that provokes the opportunity for them to get sued. This is part of the atmosphere that we live in, we all deal with it. If that were to be the thing that would guide us, we would never do anything. I strongly urge you to vote in favor of Article four.
Further discussion, Mr. Musman.
Thank you, thank you. Jeff Musman, 15 Tri Mountain Road. I just want to remind people that this is not about Northeastern, of course. This is about our natural resource areas. And the natural resource areas are Lynn Cove Reservation, Short Beach, Long Beach, Lowlands Park, Bear Pond, Mass. Audubon's Nahant Thicket, Forty Steps Beach, Crystal Beach, Lewis Cove, and East Point. So this is a much broader issue than Northeastern University.
Further discussion, Mr. Milroy.
Eda Milroy. I'm not a current resident of Nahant. I was planning board chairman when this, the current zoning language that's being discussed was here, and I, but I request permission to speak on the subject.
Yes, I've granted permission.
Okay. Our intent in 1990, we, on the planning board, we looked around the town, we saw all of these areas, and we saw the potential at some point in the future for them to be developed. And we wanted to maintain the, the natural resources of the town. We thought with regard to East Point, we thought that we were protecting it within the limitations of the Dover Amendment at that time. And unfortunately, we, at that time, certainly, and as most town planning boards were made up of laypeople, and we, we created this lack of clarity that's being discussed today. And, but, and I think making the clarification certainly is a good idea. The intent is actually made very clear in the written description of what the natural resource area is intended for. So the intent certainly of, of the current bylaw is not being changed by Article four. It is really strictly removing the ambiguity that we did not recognize in 1990.
Further discussion on the motion?
My name is Jim Walsh. I live at 33 High Street, Nahant, Massachusetts. It's November 23rd. Yesterday was November 22nd. Many of us remember that date for a tragic occurrence that happened in 1963 with the death of John F. Kennedy. A happier memory is in the first months of Mr. Kennedy's administration, he created the Cape Cod National Seashore in order to protect that beautiful area from being developed for any purpose, whether it was big condominiums or apartment houses or college campuses for any purpose. The idea was to protect the natural resources while we were able to protect them. Following that, there was a proposal made to put a shopping center right next to Walden Pond. And people said, what are you doing? Well, the people who proposed it said, we're doing it because we can make some money. It's good for us, and we don't much care about you guys. That was a national issue. People raised funds and defended Walden Pond successfully. Then in 1990, the town of Nahant, the citizens of Nahant came together and revised the whole zoning bylaw, and in the course of that, they made one relatively minor error. They had, they forgot to change a P to an N in a subsection of that bylaw. But the original bylaw says, we are, we are trying to protect these natural resource areas from being developed. That is- That is absolutely clear. So now we're here, we're going to correct that minor error. In the interim, since that time, there were people who wanted to develop the golf course. The town fought back, and we won. There were people who wanted to develop the country club land. We managed to push that aside. And now we are faced with the choice of, do we want to protect one of the most beautiful, iconic areas in our town? And I think the answer is yes, and we, by voting yes on question four, will support that idea. Thank you.
Further discussion, further discussion on the motion.
Mr. Moderator, point of information.
Point of information, yes?
I would like to hear the, our legal, beagles concurrent, or opinion on this that...
We don't have any beagles in the hall.
Legal advisors, sorry, Bee Rogers, 44 Pearl Road. I would like to hear the legal opinion about the possibility raised of building mansions or private houses, given...
Bee, there's somebody in front of you, and she is entitled to speak. So when you get to your turn, I'm sorry, we want to, we got to keep this going in a reasonable way. We'll get to you, I promise you.
No, you won't.
Oh. Well, that may, that may or may not be true.
Okay, so I will allow her to make her point of information, because I am planning on calling the question.
Yep. Thank you. Actually, I think a point of information supersedes.
Does it?
No.
No?
If you're up.
In that case, in that case, I'm Judy Walsh at 33 High Street, and I call.
Hang on a second, let me just check something. Let me just check something. Basically, a point of information is something that deals with the handling of the meeting, not with the subject of the motion. So a point of, a point of information does not preclude, I'll call for the question. But, so the question has been called for, and that means we have to vote on whether or not to cut off debate. It's a two-thirds. Is there, was there a second to the point of order?
Second.
Lot of them, okay. So the issue is whether or not to cut off debate on Article Four. So if you're in favor of cutting off further debate on Article Four, then vote yes, one A. If you're opposed, vote no, two B. We have, I think every time we hit 400, we can exercise the, ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. Okay, debate, the motion carries, so debate is cut off on Article Four, now we come to the question on Article Four. Those in favor of the motion on Article Four signify by saying, by saying, pushing your button number, one A. I, I just can't stop myself, sorry. And those opposed, please push two B for no. Okay, ten. Ball was 380, 360, and just 60 against. Listen, I want to thank all of you. I know that this has not been the most comfortable proceeding that you've ever been through, but you've been great. Do not take your voting machines home. Please go out that door.
You can turn it?
Yeah, we'll be. Go out that door, out the Nahat roadside, and turn your voting devices in. The business of this, of this meeting having been concluded, this meeting stands dissolved.